Call order, the City Council Work Session for CDV's Grand Forks for Tuesday, September 10th, 2019 is now five o'clock. City Clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Goldstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Riappell.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Does turn McCormick. Number one, request for a declaration of surplus property. Mr. Stordahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Public Works Department and Park and Recreation Department have a few vehicles that we'd like to declare surplus and then sell at the next police auction. And there's a list up in there in front of you. There's a few trucks, a flatbed. That knapite flatbed is just a flatbed. It's not on anything. And then a couple pickups for parks. And that's about it, I guess. Is there any questions?
Anybody have any questions? See none, sir? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Number two, considering, consider accepting FEMA AFG grant. Chief Firdland.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pretty self-explanatory. It is a, the FEMA AFG grant, it'll $66,000 to put an exhaust system in Station Two, which we really don't have one that functions out there and replace some outdated fire hose. Our cost to the city, about $4,500. I think it's five cents on the dollar. Any questions?
Do you have any questions on this?
Carla, we're good on the source of funds?
We are.
Okay.
There is a match, there is a matching fund.
Cool.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Number three, request for purchase and install flashing crosswalk signs. Chief Hedlund.
Thank you, Mr. President. This request stems from a couple different citizen requests, people that have contacted me regarding what they viewed as traffic safety issues near some of our schools. First is on Seventeenth Street Northwest, and it's designed basically to enhance existing crosswalks. There are already pedestrian crosswalk signs as well, but these particular parents were hoping that we could add the flashing crosswalk signs similar to our down in the area of Thirteenth and Bigland on the south end of town. Students that have to cross Seventeenth Street, that can be fairly busy at times. Obviously, it varies by time of day and whatnot, but it can be rather hectic for traffic and difficult for younger children especially to cross there. And that's, children going to New Heights or kindergarten through second grade, so they are quite young. I've done some research, a couple different, there's a variety of different companies and price ranges that go dramatically higher than these. Two of the ones that I thought were most reasonable were included in the packet. One was about $1,700 per unit. You'd have to buy two, so ballpark $3,400. The other, it comes as a set of two designed for both directions, and that was a little over $2,500. The second area that we were looking at is near River Heights, excuse me, Riverside Christian School. And that area, the request from the citizen came in as those same type of signs. After reviewing that area, I'm not sure that those are warranted at this point in time. I think some other modifications can be made, and it's my understanding Public Works is already looking at doing some of those at least. We're considering at least as a first measure to put in some painted crosswalks and then possibly add some of the pedestrian crossing signs as well. At this point in time, there is just one set of pedestrian crossing signs which are right out in front of the school, and it doesn't really take into account the more major intersections that surround the school. So we're looking at adding those. I believe Public Works is already planning on or making arrangements to get the crosswalks painted, which just there should help because that adds to the visibility of those crosswalks. Hopefully we can add some signs as well.
James.
Chief Hedlund, a question for you. Living next to Second Avenue and Seventh Street there, at that Riverside Christian School.
Yes.
We see cars every day blow that stop sign. They just, they don't stop. Would a flashing stop sign there, or flashing lights on that stop sign, would that help them see that sign maybe or pay more attention?
I truly think it would, but just because of the cost, because of the multiple intersections there versus just the one on Seventeenth, it was going to be
Yeah.
a little bit more cost prohibitive. So I thought maybe as an intermediary measure, try the crosswalks and the crosswalk signs to just make it, increase a little bit of visibility and hopefully increase some awareness of that being a school crossing, maybe as a first step. And if, and if we're still having the issues, and you living right there is certainly a very good testament to that. If we continue to have the issues after that, then we would probably come back and look at maybe adding some of the flashing signs. But I thought this might be a more cost-effective first step to at least try.
Dale, did you happen to mean a flashing stop sign?
Yeah.
Or the flat, yeah, flashing stop sign?
Stop sign, not a stoplight or nothing, just a stop sign.
Yeah, that's what I thought maybe.
With the flashing lights around, you know, like they have. Just, or maybe even, I don't know, maybe we can just shine a light on that stop sign that's there or something, you know, just so people, you know,
Yeah.
get it up here. Because they do, they fly down that street pretty fast and they don't stop. And it's the same issue we have all the schools, you know, the cars, people, because there, most people bring their kids and pick them up. So in the morning and in the afternoon, that street is packed and all-rounder with cars. So if we could do something there to help that intersection would be a good thing.
I agree.
Actually, all of many of these in here, I think anything we can do to, to help make these pedestrians and these kids make it a safer thing is a good deal. So if it means trying that first, and I just don't want to waste a lot of money trying this and saying, well, jeez, that didn't work, now let's do something a little bit different.
The signs themselves are relatively inexpensive. Mr. Stordahl can probably speak to that better than I can. And it sounds like they already are planning on putting in those crosswalks, which we certainly think that's a good first step.
Yeah.
Are we, are we putting the reflective strips on the signposts?
For the most part, no.
Okay.
We haven't been.
I saw that on a MINDOT thing when I was doing research for Oliver's last question. And they say that maybe does help some visibility on a stop sign. It might be a low-cost step
Anybody else have any questions? See none, sir?
I, as, I guess what I would like to point out, we, I don't have any funding source for this at this point in time, so I'm not sure if, if there's another area or if we could use, you know, the access from last year or what. It's, I'm sure you may probably dig through the budget somewhere. But, you know, especially if we went the $2,500 range, it's, you know, I conceivably could come, come up with that somewhere in my budget, but it's, you know, we are still planning to make a few more expenditures before the end of the year.
Yeah, I think we can work with you on that and see what we can do.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Number four, review of amended liquor ordinance. Mr. Goldstead. Everybody has a copy of the one that Megan sent out. They had changes in it. Yep.
Did he say that?
No, he just said. Mr. Goldstead, do you have anything?
Uh, number...
On yours, the ordinance.
Basically, it's just following what the council was asking for, to remove the requirement, or the impairment that's an individual could own to, we'll say, bar restaurants. That's been removed. And then Megan pointed out a couple of changes that were in the new state law that wasn't in the code, so we, or in the ordinance. We changed that there as well. Number four, we just added "or importer." And then under number five, we modified number five so that anybody that had a standalone liquor store such as Hugo's couldn't have two standalone liquor stores because that's per statute. Can't have two off sales by the same corporation. So it's, that's the change.
Anybody have any questions on that? Mr. Helms. Oh, Mr. Johnson?
I have a question on this Section 117. I think it's seventeen, 117, seven or seventeen. Where, like, off-sale businesses like Hugo's, when they have, when they have people in there that are giving out samples, are they, where that's against the law?
Yes, I'm not aware of what you're talking about, sir.
I'll find it here.
You had also included the whole liquor ordinance, and I included that in the packet so they could review the whole thing. And he's looking at a separate section.
If they're giving away, if they're giving away liquor samples, I'd have to double-check that. I'm not sure.
I think they are allowed up to a certain amount. They can't charge for them, but I think it's like 25 milliliters or something like that.
That sounds right.
No, I, the only thing I was questioning is, I read it was against the law to have an off-sale and then have people consuming alcohol at an off-sale.
I'd have to double-check on that, sir, but typically if they're, for instance, if you are an off-sale and they are running a special on a new wine or a new product, they normally are able to give away small, we'll just say, tastes of that to see if you want to purchase it. But they'd have to make sure that they're following any of the other requirements.
These are under micro-distilleries L1 in the...
Yeah, I don't have that with because that wasn't something, that's already a part of our...
So that's micro-distilleries. I don't know that that's straight off-sale.
Yeah.
L1 under there?
I'm looking through.
Well, L1 micro-distilleries, that's, that's a whole separate portion of it that the state just modified a couple of years ago. And that, that, or that whole portion of our ordinance just mirrors the state statute.
Yeah, I know what he's, what he's talking about. I look at...
It's only twice in the whole document, and it's under micro-distilleries.
I know it was a...
Fifteen ml.
Yeah. It's just those little tiny cups that you can get a taste of it.
Anybody else have anything?
But I'll look up that for you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Helms.
So basically, our, our new ordinance here would allow Mr. Moore and the other people to have a restaurant than the way we have it now. So we're, we'd be clear on that?
That'd be correct as long as they meet all other requirements that's required by the council.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? I see none, sir. Appreciate it. Let's move on until next week and do the readings and then publications after that. Mr. Goldstead? Number five, request to consider paying for hydraulics study. Mr. Vedder.
Thank you. After we got the Thirty-second Bridge in our long-term transportation plan, our Metropolitan Planning Organization was taking a look to see what we can do to continue this process. What Metropolitan Planning, or MPO, did with the Maryfield Bridge was did a feasibility study. So the MPO Board was going to ask MPO to do a feasibility study for the Thirty-second Avenue Bridge location and address three specific areas, one being hydraulics, one being a more in-depth look at traffic patterns to see how a bridge would affect the traffic patterns. And the third part was to see how we could incorporate school safety into the, the bridge project. When Mr. Haugen looked at the funding sources, he does not have a funding source that will participate with the hydraulic studies. And when we took it to the MPO Board, the MPO Board moved to look at not just Thirty-second, but at three bridge locations, the Elks, Thirty-second, and the Forty-seventh Avenue locations. I did mention that Forty-seventh is out of our jurisdiction so that we probably wouldn't participate in that. And since the MPO can't pay for that part of the study, our representatives were supposed to go back to the City Councils to see if they would be interested in doing a hydraulic study for the other ones. It's estimated that hydraulic study for each location is about $30,000. So if we do participate in it, we would look at $15,000 for Thirty-second, $15,000 for the Elks Drive. Grand Forks has already said that they've got a list of engineers that they work with that have gone through a process already. So they would be the lead agency on procuring the engineer to do the study and then go forward from there. So it's up to us whether we want to participate in it or not. My feeling is, we've studied these bridge locations three, four times. Thirty-second has always risen to the top. Grand Forks has got more of a political problem that, to get a bridge locations, and that's why they keep expanding the scope and wanting to include other locations. All the studies say Thirty-second is the best one. So my recommendation would be to participate in the Thirty-second and not even look at the Elks Drive at this time either. But that's just me.
So at this, we'd be $15,000 and then Grand Forks would have to pay $15,000?
Yep. We'd split the cost for whatever locations we want to participate in.
On before them yet?
I'm not sure if they've taken it to their, Todd Fealan was at a meeting that where we discussed it, so.
First of all, Clarence, as I read through this, I do want to thank you again for the consistent service that you give to East Grand Forks on the MPO Board. I really appreciate it. The very fact that you took a look and said, you're bringing the three, we can't do Forty-seventh. And then to bring it to us for this review, again, the service that you give to us through there. A lot of times what happens there is like a little bit challenging, maybe a little bit at times frustrating or divisive, and yet you do it consistently and you do it well. And it probably goes to your accounting background of, you can see things in a very clean analysis in these areas. So thanks. I mean, if we end up doing just Thirty-second, if that's what the group wants, I'll sure support it. If you feel that they will be able to obstruct that, just, you know, it won't happen over there on the Grand Fork side, they really don't prefer it, then to expand to Elks would be reasonable. But if you think there's still a flicker of hope that we can do it right along Thirty-second to bring safety to the schools, you know, maybe even enhance the safety with some measures for delivery of kids along those schools on Thirty-second, maybe we can make it even better, more safe than it is now. And I would think if that came forward with a plan like that, then Thirty-second is, is right back on the table again. So whatever you think, if you think there's a, a hope of still going through at Thirty-second, I'd sure support just studying hydraulics at the one. But if you think there's a, a pretty good chance that it's going to be blocked for the foreseeable future, then to expand it back to Elks, I think would be reasonable.
So where is this money going to come from?
Carla?
I was waiting for that. We do have $34,000 set aside for projects that we usually transfer to a project fund. And I'm not aware of that being used for any projects that we have this year. And that's one reason I always kind of throw it in, just because there might be a project that comes up. So there's $34,000 available.
Mr. Grassel.
I agree with Mr. Vedder's comment about the political aspect of what's going on in Grand Forks. If I remember off the top of my head, I believe the mayor said he will veto anything that costs any money on Thirty-second Avenue. I mean, I'm for the Thirty-second Avenue Bridge. I think it's probably the most logical spot. But, I mean, I'll vote for it as long as they give their side. Otherwise, there's no way that I can support something that we're never going to see because there's a political barnstorm over who's going to be in the next seat. It's just the way it is. I mean, it's, so, yeah, when I read this, I thought, this is a good idea, but, yeah. Twenty-third, Twenty-third is also, is that, is that Elks Drive? Is Twenty-third?
Yes.
Okay.
Right on the, right in the southern edge of Lincoln Golf Course there?
Right.
That's a lot, next logical spot unless you feel there's still a good chance for
I got my druthers. Part of our thought process, you know, everyone says, well, you can't even build it on Thirty-second, and that's why we're going to do a hydraulic study. If hydraulics come back and say, yep, there's no way you can even build it there, then okay, now Thirty-second is off the table. If hydraulics come back and say, yep, it's still feasible, well, okay, at least we've gone that next step then. MPO is still going to do the other two aspects, the enhanced traffic flow patterns and the school safety. They're just going to wait until after the hydraulic study is done now, because if it eliminates one of those sites, then we won't study all of those sites again.
I'll say we move it forward and can, and put a caveat on there, only if Grand Forks approves.
Yep, they have not discussed it. It was not at the committee of the whole last night, and it was not on the September 3rd agenda either. But they do have a, a neighborhood meeting, safety and bridge meeting on September 17th, for Ward Five and Six. So I'm not sure where it's at after that.
Mr. Helms.
Mr. President, I agreed, I agree with Mr. Grassel. Mr. Vedder, I also, I know you're really, you're, you're really adamant on this Thirty-second. I just, I'm not totally against any, any of the sites because I don't know that much about any of them as of yet. But what I'm more worried about is spending money that's not going to do us any good when it's in the tail end, when it's done. That's where we need to be wiser and smarter on the council. We need to, if we can work it out with Grand Forks and say, hey, let's, let's, let's sit down and let's talk about this, and let's see if we can work this out and figure out the proper place for this. If we can get together with them and do that, then I think we could do all this other stuff. But I think if, if they're not willing to budge, and frankly, they're holding the trump card in my book, I, I'm afraid, you know, so that's my concern, is just spending money to do this. And, and it's not going to go anywhere. That's what I'm really worried about, so.
The hydraulic study would have to be done with any bridge that we go forward with, correct?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah. So I don't think that it's money going "under the bridge," quote unquote.
Well, Thirty-second kind of is, I think. That's, that's what I'm saying. Because unless Grand Forks wants to talk, and they're absolutely totally against Thirty-second, then I think that's kind of money under the bridge.
Yeah, and I don't know that they're totally against it. I mean, you've got a couple people there that are very vocal about it.
Yes.
But there's a lot that can happen between now and when that bridge is built.
Oh, no doubt, yeah. I, I understand that. But the thing is, is they've been talking about this for the last 30 years and they haven't got anything else solved yet. That's what really bothers me, you know? The MPO just keeps, seems like they just keep dragging it on and on and on instead of really making these decisions and that this is the thing to do.
MPO, all the MPO can do is do the studies. And they take directions from the cities and the counties that they represent. Once the studies are done, then it's the cities, counties, and the states to take the bull by the horns and move forward. And the only reason it's gotten traction is because I've been very vocal about a Thirty-second Avenue Bridge in the last 10 years here. And I haven't let it die like the past studies have. I've been, keep pushing it forward, so.
Yeah, no, I know you have, and that's...
And I'll think, I'll ride that one. I don't care.
Yeah, I think this would be a gesture to not let it just sit idle. This is direct action toward the building of a bridge. And so if, if, if we feel, you know what, this should have been done maybe 40, or 30, or 20, or 10 years ago, this is a step toward not letting it go another 10, 20, 30, 40 years with no action. Because again, this is a step toward building a bridge at one of the locations, whichever turns out to be the best. Neighborhood connection.
So would you want to move forward for a vote?
Everyone, my opinion is to just do Thirty-second. We can always amend it later if we want to add Elks. But that's up to everyone else.
Have they want the indication only if Grand Forks approves the spending of it?
That's fine.
Are you okay to leave Elks out, the rest for this pass?
Mr. Helms.
The other thing that bothers me about the South End Bridge too, especially Thirty-second, what bothers me the most is what it's going to do to downtown East Grand Forks. If they get a direct line right up to Thirty-second, most of those people that live out on the Point, you know, with exceptions of the ones that probably work right downtown, they'll never see downtown or 220 North again. They'll have no reason to. I'm sorry to say it, but it's the truth. I remember back several years ago, I worked for Kenny Standard, right where East Side Express is now. And the old bridge was still there at that time, and Eagles and all that stuff on the Point. We stood in the front window of that station in the mornings many a times and watched those cars go right on across the Point Bridge. They never turned to come across that bridge and come downtown. They went right on across that Point Bridge. And then when they built the new Louisian River Bridge, then it turned out to be almost easier for them to come downtown. And it picked up traffic. And I'm really worried about that South End Bridge, what it's going to do to downtown, because it's definitely going to hurt it.
Our downtown is, is quite a draw. I think the majority of patrons down there are not East Grand Forks residents. We're pulling hard from Grand Forks. It's that attractive of a, of a region, and the venues there are just that appealing. I have the same concern, to be honest, Dale, as for, you know, wanting to make sure that we preserve that nice pipeline of patrons into our downtown area. But we also have a duty to give people a sensible route to where they're going. And those redundant miles that I keep talking about, you start south and you end south on either side, those redundant two and three and four miles pushed through our streets are really unacceptable.
Anything else, Mr. Vedder?
Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Move on to number six, review of department changes for 2020 budget. Economic Development, Mr. Gordy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will point out to you, this has already gone through the EDA, and this is a budget that they have recommended for approval. With, with a couple of exceptions, the budget merely adjusts for actual expenditures that are going on and had, had increases in prices. So let me draw your attention to the two items in particular. Forty-three, 190, professional services. We've committed to the two-year participation in the regional market capture work, and we need to be able to fund that second year. So I've asked for additional funds in that, in the amount of $1,200 to be able to fund that second year fully. The second item is forty-four, 330, dues and subscriptions. It reflects participation in the Greater Grand Forks Young Professionals. We are one of the founding organizations, and this year administration and economic development split the cost. It's a benefit for every employee who works for the city. But not only that, the organization benefits everybody who's on this side of the road too, whether they live here or work here. So that's a $500 increase for, just for that partnership. In addition, we've received a request from the Small Business Development Center, which is now located at the University of Minnesota Crookston, for $10,000. Their funding sources come from the Small Business Administration, and there is some small amount of state funding. But other than that, they receive, they ask for requests from the organizations, communities where they do work. They have been helping businesses. I routinely, when I get a business request from a small business, refer them to them, to the SBDC. And I do that because I want to make sure that our businesses can succeed. And this is a no-cost-to-them service that has helped businesses be able to succeed and survive and thrive in East Grand Forks. And for that reason, it's important to us. And therefore, I would suggest that, that we do this. The EDA concurred with that request.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Gordy on that? See none, sir?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Move on to Police Department Information. Chief Hedlund.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since budget was initially presented to you, we've made a couple modifications of the Police Department budget. First would be in the area of, well, just looking at the pages, I guess I'm, I'm still trying to get clarification from Johnson Controls on what the bid will actually be for the control system for our jail portion of the Police Department. Unfortunately, their staff that, that handled that portion of their business are not located in Grand Forks, and they have not been able to get up here anytime in, as, as quickly as I would have liked. This $175,000, that is the preliminary request or preliminary bid, or not a bid, but preliminary estimate for that project, is based on what their, their costs were for Fort Tatton's Jail, which is significantly larger than ours. So I would certainly hope that number is going to come down significantly, but I, I just don't have any better numbers for you yet at this point in time. Certainly would like to think that before the budget's finalized, we'll have a much firmer number and would hopefully be going downward from that number. As we move to the second page in the equipment category, we had initially had two squad cars in the budget. It would have been two, potentially two SUVs or possibly one SUV and one sedan. We've decided our, our current sedan is a 2017. Under our three-year replacement cycle, it would have been due to be replaced. Mileage is still quite low. It's in the 60,000 range. It's certainly still operating. It's certainly still operating quite well, and there's, we don't see any reason to replace it at this point in time. I can't promise you that I won't come in asking for three cars next year is the only problem. It all depends on what their situation is with those vehicles next year, but I certainly think in, you know, due diligence, we should just be requesting one vehicle for this year. And so that would be just the additional SUV. So the animal control funds, the mayor and I are still working with both Dr. Peterson and Circle of Friends Animal Shelter in Grand Forks, trying to get that finalized, and that's still a work in progress, so we still don't have a firm number on that. And then we did get, as you're all aware, we have finally, we have finalized the agreement with the schools on the MOU for the school resource officer position, so that those numbers are firm at this point in time. Any questions for me?
So on that 175, how big is the, their jail system?
I'm not sure, to be honest with you, but we're four adult cells and two juvenile cells, and I got to think they're significantly larger than that.
I did check on that, it's 54 units.
Which is dramatically larger than ours. But they're not going to be apples to apples, you know, rebels, you know, so it's, so there, I'm sure there's going to be differences, our needs could well be different than theirs are. The one part of that system that controls the jail cells also controls other access points throughout our building, so it is a little bit more than just the jail cells, but it's significantly less than 54 units regardless, so.
Do you all remember talking about the simplex system? They've put in, like rewired this and put in jumpers here and tried to scrounge parts from there, and they've been told this thing is just obsolete, and it really is, it's kind of the brain hub of the controls for the doors and all different things there. So they've done well, I think, even with our own maintenance people and then bringing in the outside when necessary to extend the life of that right to its limit. I'm convinced of that.
Thank you.
Mr. Vedder.
Thank you. This year, 2019, did we replace two squad cars?
This year, we only got the truck.
Just truck and then K-9 unit?
Yes.
Okay.
And that will be, yeah, that's, I guess, that hasn't been included in our traditional five squad cars, the K-9 unit is kind of separate, but this year was just a pickup truck, besides the K-9 vehicle.
And else, have you anything for the chief? See none, sir. Appreciate it. Move on to Park and Recreation information.
Reed is not here, so he asked me to take care of it. He did send some extensive information to you, just to highlight a few. He is looking at you indeed to do a tree study. As you're aware, the ash trees are dying in the area, and so they're looking at, you know, how many there are and even what to replace them with, and he has information on the study that was done and what is best to grow around here. Increase in part-time wages to playground, and that's because of increase in numbers of participants, so revenue actually will go up a little bit with that. Swimming pool, those are increases in just the normal expenses because of being open for the full year and having a wonderful year. They actually increased the revenue, we increased the revenue too, so the increase of revenue from $34,550 to $42,500, so we had a great year at the pool. Park areas, increased maintenance just because of more of what the usage is. And then capital improvements, the Red Lake Corridor matching funds, which we didn't use this year, but we will plan on using next year. Playground equipment and borders, park shelters, he's looking at the one at Stose Park, that will be out of the building maintenance fund, that's not in the general fund. He's looking at a caterpillar compact loader with a snow plow to use in the greenway system. That is not a picture of one of our trucks, he found it on the internet, but that's about what happens, he said. And so he has a picture of what they're looking to use to remove snow and also use it in other areas of park and rec. And then they're looking at a baseball field groomer, and he was going to check to see if there's any organizations that would maybe help fund that. Next page, the deck chairs, they want to buy a little bit, some chairs that are withstand people weather better, and so he's looking at deck chairs for $6,000, and he has pictures of them. And the columbarium, he did talk about that the other day, how 50% is already full from the one we made and that we replaced, we placed in service in 2016, and so that money would come out of the perpetual care fund. And he has a picture of that. Any questions?
Concrete headers also out of perpetual fund, there was one more item below.
Oh, yeah, and that's for the cement, sorry. That was for, to put the headstones in in that part of the park, and that part of the park is selling better than just the flat ones, so.
Anybody have any questions to pass on? I see none. Carla or?
Just a reminder, the, it's kind of been a spur for me, is the park department in charge of doing greenway, and I understand that's greenway, but we're using park apartment, department stuff to clear all these trails and do all this stuff, but yet they're not getting any maintenance money from any form of, from the greenway, you know what I'm saying? We charge, we get some money back for the trails, but we get no funds for material or maintenance for equipment. And those guys use that equipment a lot, and plus, it's our safe schools sidewalks as well, so just if you see caterpillar loader and plow, just put that in the back of your mind. I know it's $87,000, but it's a piece of equipment that those guys use all the time.
You know, for a fact, if the trails don't get cleared of snow within two or three days, the calls start to come in, because all winter long, people take their pets down through there, they really enjoy that. So for sure, it's an amenity that they like in our community.
Okay, thank you. So David and Carla, had anything? I know you guys handed out new sheets today.
No, other than, I know Carla is currently coordinating with the county as far as when they're going to have their preliminary budget hearing, so that we do not have ours on the same night to bring that forward. So unless there, I guess we have any further direction on what our preliminary levy should be, or if there's a number that we don't want our preliminary levy to go over, we'll bring that forward for approval.
Yeah, so the preliminary levy has to be in by the end of September, which means that our next city council meeting, we'd have to approve a preliminary levy, and we also have to approve a public budget meeting. Meg and I looked at the calendar, and probably what our suggestion is maybe having a special meeting on December 10th at 6:00 PM. The meeting has to be at 6:00 PM. That would give us that work session if there was things you want to hammer out on the budget, and then have approval on the 17th of December.
Typically, we try to have the hearing at the first meeting, our first, but obviously with the county having it, we've tried, gone back and forth over the years with when we hold our meetings. And the idea for the special meeting came up in case somebody comes in and suggests something, it'll give you guys another week, because I think the following, we typically don't have a four, or the fourth meeting in December, and I think the 24th is that Tuesday, so I don't think you guys really want to hold a meeting on Christmas Eve. So just an idea to, and what, as staff, what we can do is have everything prepared, ready to go. We usually don't have very much for that work session, so I don't know if you really wanted to hold a work session prior to, if we were done in 20 minutes, half hour, if there's only one or two items, and then wait and have the meeting at 6:00 or just do every, you know, do everything at 6:00. And then what we can do is if you guys are satisfied, you know, satisfied with what you have going into the meeting, we can bring the resolutions and have them available, so if you wanted to vote on them that night, you could. If we do have a lot of people coming in and you want to take another look, we can, you know, bring it back to the next meeting, and you guys can give direction on how you want it to come back to at the following meeting.
If I could just put my two cents, I would recommend that we just have the meeting at 6:00. Typically, those, just save that time, because otherwise, typically those meetings are really short for that time of the year. We don't want to, with the holidays or anything, there's not a lot coming up, and so you'd be done in five, 10 minutes and be waiting around until 6:00.
Last year, we did have the public meeting on the 4th, which, now, the county said they're going to do theirs on the 3rd, which would be the Tuesday before, and we also approved that at the same time. So our budget was approved on the 4th, just to recollect from last year.
Okay. Mayor?
Back to the initial question, does anyone want to recommend a starting point as for our top number?
Remember, for the preliminary levy, that number can only go down, you can't go up, so you need to make sure that it's.
We're at 5% right now, right?
Yeah.
In our projections here.
If we wanted to get our budget on here to a zero, we'd have to go at about 10, nine and a half or 10, just for your information.
Have to go at one. Probably had the money from 2018.
Pardon?
Yeah, we're going to, and in other words, we will use some of that surplus, is what.
Right. I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that, that it's.
It was a shot.
Yeah, nine and a half or 10%, if you wanted to not, you know, dig into the fund balance or whatever, which is all your choice, so.
I am, I'd be happy to see a number around five as our starting point. I know we can't go above that if we put that out there, but I see no reason that we would ever have to go above that. I know a decade ago, when we were doing this, sometimes we'd throw out a number like 10, 15, 20, and then drill it down later, but I feel like you all are on top of this, and, you know, by department, we've gone through and done well. And of course, I say it every time, but when we're saying five as a gross levy increase, that also includes any growth that we've had in our community, and so what that means is to the individual, you don't know exactly till we get back from the county, but it could be 2% plus or minus, you know, per property owner. I'd anticipate the number five would make it so that my city share of taxes would probably go up 2% plus or minus with that. And I think that's excellent, to hold it at about the rate of inflation and hold services at a high level.
Anybody else have any? Mr. Vedder?
Thank you. Carla, has the county given us an indication when they're going to give us the property values?
They do not, property values, the truth in taxation has to be mailed out after November 10th, between November 10th and November 24th. But they did say that we did have an increase in value of $12 million from last year to this year, and I.
New properties?
Well, I think that that's the question I asked them, but, you know, I know when you looked at other, if you look at people's properties, that some of their properties actually value went up, so I, I'm just saying 12 million increase. I don't know if that's, you know, new property or some of the old valuations have gone up. So I don't really want to say yes or no on that, I'm not sure.
So can't be new.
Are you okay with setting at five as the mayor's wishers?
Well, I'm just saying, how could it be new properties? I don't think we've sold that many houses or that many lots or built that many houses, so to have it have gone up 12 million dollars.
There's new buildings coming that have been on, that have been, they're coming on.
Did all those apartments come in? Are those all full now, all full tax, all the apartments?
Actually, Paul might know better since he pays the abatements.
Remember, we had to increase the amount of money that we were paying out for the abatements, because there were more homes built that should be coming up, that would have come up before taxation. So that would show up as an increase. We had to increase it, what, to about 70,000 or some such stuff?
Right, and that would.
So it's higher.
So that, but that would make the slice smaller for everybody else, even though we're even paying the abatements, that would make everybody's slice of the pie smaller.
That goes back to the question, are you okay with leaving at five, or do you want us, if someone indicated they wanted to put it higher, Mayor, would you have a problem with that?
I'd, you know, I think we're going to get back down into that range. If someone's comfort level is to go a little higher, I'd say it's reasonable to go a bit higher or at five, you know, somewhere in that ballpark, hoping to get it back down to there. So, I mean, I threw that out as a starting point, and I haven't used my veto pen yet.
We have to have this finalized by when? What was the date?
This, though, this preliminary has to be done next Tuesday. We have to send a preliminary levy on Tuesday, yeah. Well, our meeting is on Tuesday.
You can lower it, but you can't raise it after that.
Right, just a preliminary, so when is the final, what?
The end of December. So that, their plan would be to probably vote on that before our meeting on December 17th, either the 10th or the 17th.
So assuming the mayor vetoes something at 10%, when would, when would the council be able to make a determination on that, or does it go back to last year?
This was not a threat to veto.
Oh, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
But doesn't, wouldn't go back to?
It would stay at what it was, yeah, it would stay at that. So we'd have to have a special meeting to approve any kind of increase.
I think it's fair to say, as the mayor did, I think the 5% would be good, and if we can get that 2%, I don't think we'd have a lot of upset people, because like he said, that'd just be inflation, you know? I mean, it's, everybody knows it's going up, it's just, that's the way it is every year, it doesn't matter, so I think if we can hold it down like that, I think I would say that he done his job.
We have had yours.
They did their job.
I know, yeah.
Yeah, good work team if that happens.
Vedder, you're fine with the five?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I think that's a great place to start. Mr. Vedder, what are you thinking?
If you want that 32nd, you better go to 30.
Oh, no, oh, no. There'll be money for a bridge. I'm okay with five.
Yeah, I'm all right.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. Megan will make sure the resolution is ready for the meeting. Thank you.
Anything else to add on the budget discussions? If not, I'll entertain them with Mr. Elms.
I'm sorry, I have one question back at the pool if I may. Is it common practice for city-owned pools to furnish chairs? I mean, why do we have to furnish a chair at the pool for?
I guess I could answer that question. Yes, it is, it is common for public, for the public pools to furnish their chairs, to furnish chairs out there. It is, it is a kind, it's actually is a bit of a big issue, and one that there has been some chatter about this summer on the League of Minnesota Cities, City Administrator's website. Our list serve there, it's chairs and shade. What we've seen is those shade shelters, those things that we put in with the remodel are probably more popular or more in demand than the chairs. However, there is a big demand for seating and comfortable seating for when parents bring their kids there and they watch them swim, and that they don't like to stand around and bring their, so, yeah, so yes, the answer is yes, it is, it is common. And we've been, I know Reed has been experimenting with a few different types of chairs, and I think he's finally found the one that we think is going to hold up best to the type of use that they get. We tried the plastic chairs, we tried the other things. What we found is that when we had a combination of the, what they call the zero-gravity chairs and the plastic chairs, people would fight over the zero-gravity chairs, because they're much better for reading and watching their kids and those type of things. But what we found is the ones that we've been buying, which were cheap, significantly cheaper than the commercial-grade ones, are just not holding up like we had hoped, so.
That's why I was asking, because looking at this picture, this chair looks like it went through a war zone, and I thought if they had to furnish it own, it maybe wouldn't look that way.
So, yes, and it's, and when there are not enough chairs, our guards do hear it.
Hedlund, you have something to add, sir?
Thank you. I would just like to make sure everybody is aware that next Wednesday, September 18th, will be the Fourth Annual East Grand Forks Showcase. The last three years, we've just done it right out here in the City Hall parking lot. This year, we're looking to try to expand this. It's traditionally just been a way to, for the public to be able to come and get some information about all the various city departments, but this, and we've also included some of the county departments, like the Sheriff's Department of Public Health, things like that. We are expanding it this year, and all of the schools from East Grand Forks were invited. Riverside Christian unfortunately just notified us that they're not.
Riverside Christian unfortunately just notified us that they're not going to be able to take part this year, but Sacred Heart will be there. East Grand Forks Public Schools and Northland, they're all going to have representatives at, at this event as well. Uh, because of that and, and increasing the size, we're going to be moving it up to the Civic Center. Uh, it'll be outside there and weather permitting, the majority of the events will be outside. Uh, if it rains, we'll have to move inside, but the, the goal is to keep everything outside. And we're going to have, uh, more activities than in the past. It'll be, I think, even, even bigger and better than in the past. Uh, I think at least two East Grand Forks restaurants plan to be there giving samples out and there'll be a variety of other departments and, both from East Grand Forks and other agencies that'll be giving out, uh, a, a variety of items, informational items as well as, as some, some snacks and things like that.
Thank you, sir.
Did you say something about a dunk tank?
Thank you very much, Mr. Vedder. Uh, we will be having a dunk tank that night. Uh, we're not charging any cash fee or anything like that, uh, but there'll be various local officials. I've invited some people from, from, you know, East Grand Forks Schools. I've asked the mayor, um, I plan to take part and, and we'll see, uh, Sheriff Tadman is, is on the fence as to whether he's going to be able to take part, but I'm, I'm hoping he'll be able to as well. And what people would do is either they could make a monetary donation or donate some non-perishable food items that would then go to the East Grand Forks food shelf.
Maybe they'll give you five bucks if you figure out a conflict for me that day.
For a can of food.
What was the date?